Wouldn't have to have an extra.
I.
Copy. I can just.
And then.
If you need to refer to what I can chip, I can change with.
True also.
We're good, alrighty. Good afternoon, everybody. And this is the. What day of the tenth of May, right? May tenth, time is flying and I haven't even started drinking yet, I can't remember the date. The tenth of May, this is the Wadbo Valley Select Board Regular Meetings. And I am retreat of the Select Board Chair and with me today is Vice Chair Bob Fries and Select Board Member Wendy Rathgiver. So we have a quorum. Alrighty, so is anybody here for privilege of the floor? Okay, I see no one asking for privilege of the floor. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to address an issue that all three Select Board Members noted. There's been some public comment on social media about some cloudiness in our drinking water. So Dylan, could you please explain?
Absolutely. So yesterday, Dan O'Quinn was attempting to relocate their forest name at the Green Peak Devera Way. Development site. And because of our inability to isolate the water name, we were opening and closing valves, which created turbulence throughout the water system. Which stirred up just sediment that's naturally occurring in the distribution system. Typically, from what I've heard, Thomas Spring area and the Presidential's area as well. This is gonna happen two more times scheduled anyways. We have one May sixteenth that we're gonna be scheduled. We're gonna have to have another one following that as well. Because the attempt yesterday was unsuccessful to isolate in their area. So. We're gonna do our best to try to minimize it, but it's the nature of the beast whenever you start opening.
Nothing wrong with the water, the quality of the water.
Exactly, it's just.
It's just cloudy and turbidity.
Exactly, bring your water for a little while, it'll clear up. Again, it's just sediment that gets stirred up. As soon as you increase or change the volume of flow through the forest veins, so.
Sharon, does it, the, does it pick up when he talks like that?
Yes.
Oh, does, okay, good. Alright.
I hear you.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Good, good on that. Alright. Let's go on, move on to approval of minutes for the special Select Board Meeting on one May. Anybody have any further comments on those? So I think we're good, could have a motion to.
I make a motion to accept them as we think it would.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, moving on to Department Head Resorts. Burke, I see you back there and I see all this activity going on along the pond.
Yes, so the dock is in and the six pedal boats are locked up on dock right now. So that's, that happened today. Well, she's great news. We are opening this Friday for a special group that will be in town and will be open on Saturday as well for limited hours, but. You know, anyone's welcome to use the boats during that time, but we're not really expecting many other people on Friday other than this group. We'll also be open next weekend, Friday and Saturday. And then, of course, Memorial Day Weekend, we open, you know, for the public. And we'll be open Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then going forward, it will be the weekends, Saturday, Sunday until. Please don't have the date off the top of my head, June seventeenth-ish, we'll go to seven days a week. So, looking good right now. I know we didn't work really hard on that, so.
So the location worked out, putting the dock in, that's worked out okay?
Yep, so far so good. I know we're, there's some small adjustments that still need to be made to the, to the entrance area. But they're still considering what is absolutely necessary, maybe a railing, I'm not quite sure, yeah.
Need for signage?
We do, I have ordered a big flag sign to get people attention that's there. It's like a boat rental sign. But in terms of signage, I don't think that's necessarily beyond what we have, just because it's visible where it will be, you know, people will be drawn to that. And then this one feather sign. That I'm ordering will be installed there, but that, I probably won't get that for another three weeks. We'll just keep you updated.
Does it, would it be anywhere for, around there for people to sit while they're waiting if they have to wait?
Um.
Is that usually not a consideration or issue?
Yeah, we, if you're, if we get to the point where people are waiting in line, it is first come, first served. So there really is no way for you to get out of line and sit and for us to know, you know? So you, if it's so busy, like Memorial Day often is, or. You know, for the July, I mean, we have certain days that we're very used to that. You just have to stay in line, you know, that's just how.
That's been done in the past.
Yes. If, you know, you can't really, there's not an opportunity to sit down.
How about for the staff?
Um, yes, we will have our table over there with chairs. There's also sort of that cupboard area. So we, I think it's gonna be a better situation in terms of that. But like I said, we're gonna be going through this process and I'm sure things will come up. But so far, it seems like a good event system.
When's the raft going?
Usually that doesn't go in until closer to mid-June, I don't know.
Mostly because our guys have to get in.
In the water. Really abusing, there's no one really utilizing it. You know, a ton until camps get started closer to the Fourth of July anyway. So they, they usually don't get that until at least mid-June.
Do we have safety? Boats and, you know, life-saving stuff on the beach?
We have some of that, we have throw bags and some of that stuff for the boat staff, but we don't think we have any public access ones. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I don't think we do. I mean, I think that that goes along with our sort of, our statement that says no lifeguards on duty. And having us state that is keeping us from having to have lifeguards and liability along with it. I don't know, I could look into that, you know, specifically if you had like one of those donuts mounted somewhere.
Right.
I could do that.
Maybe.
Down to the shed. Um. Yeah, I mean, as long as we don't create any liability, we could, we'll look into that.
Yeah.
Seems like there should be something just to.
I suspect it will be used off hours for.
Yeah.
flotation device, but it's.
You'd have to, when you, when you shut down the boats for the day, you'd probably have to take.
Yeah.
But then it kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's that habit. On the dock with them and then we put it away and it's, you know, it's a throw bag, familiar with that. But I can.
You can investigate it and. Little ice cream shop and the boat house there.
Snack shack.
Yeah, make some money. No? Duck feeding station?
Oh, man.
Great.
Oh.
Anything else?
Yes, um, so we have a fishing derby, which is the May twenty-seventh. Same time, you know, early morning, eight fifteen, I believe, eight AM. And we have lots of sponsors and we're, we're excited. We have people signing up. There's, it's online registration or calling our department, so it's all. And then also our cleanup day is this Friday. And there are a couple of important things I wanted to highlight about that. If people want to come out to help, then they, all they need to do is bring themselves to the rec department at ten o'clock. We'll supply the trash bags, the gloves, a small gift that's donated by broker real estate, and then all they have to do is they'll take a route, we'll be handing out routes. They'll go pick up the trash with whomever their group is. They can bring their own group and request a route. And then they leave the trash, the full trash along the sidewalk wherever they are, and the DPW will come by and pick that up, so they don't need to bring that back to the rec department. And then if they're interested, we are gonna have some light snacks from La Hacienda at the rec department at one o'clock. And then there's also a brush pile pickup for single-family homes that will be a part of this cleanup day. We just want everyone to know that they need to have their brush pile out by twelve noon if they expect it to be picked up, because we have to give the guys enough. Time to go around and pick all those up. You know, we have had a problem in the past where people start seeing the brush piles go out and they say, oh, I'm gonna do that and they put it out later in the day. Well, then it's not gonna get picked up. So you just wanna make sure it's, people know it's Friday only and your brush piles have to be out by twelve noon.
It's Friday the twelfth.
Yeah, and it's not for condos, it's for single-family homes. And I think, I mean, I have a lot more I could talk about, but I think that's probably the gist of it for now.
Doing okay in staffing?
Yep, we have a couple of holes that we are being creative about and still kind of hopeful that we'll find. The people to fill those roles, but we are able to cover it if we have to. There may be a couple of cut things that were sort of extra that we might not be able to do. For example, the Friday Night Fire, which we have done historically. On Packard, where people do smores and all that, we might not be able to cover things like that, but the heart, you know, the need of our programs will still be happening.
How was the coordination with the school going regarding after-school programs, the end of the school year, et cetera?
Um, it's, there have been no problems.
Good.
We've been running, we're running lots of clubs and after-school programs. We have the dates announced and we have not heard anything about there being a problem with that. Cause we're, we're in the third session of the, the third and last session of the year for after-school, where the dates have been, you know. And people haven't had knowledge of that for.
And it's gonna be very tight this year too, right? I mean, school and then end of school.
It's gonna be so tight, it's gonna be hard to train our summer staff.
Okay.
We are gonna be able to.
Okay. Yes, Wendy, anything?
I did one, one other thing about the whole cleanup thing. I did send out an email to Sharon and Dave requesting that they sent an alert out, just so the greater community gets us. We don't have a problem with brush being left out. Not being able to pick it up. I know that DPW is very busy with other projects.
There's a road race this weekend, right?
There is, on Sunday. I think it's up at the mountain though.
It's starting in Town Square and it's running up to the mountain. I, I think the latest count was, I think it was under a hundred or something participants, so it wasn't gonna be a very big, very big race.
It's direct, I thought it was a loop, like the four mile loop, you can walk it or you can run it or.
Unless they changed it from what they.
Okay.
Their permit said it was a one-way. They were trying to get people to go up to the mountain, they were gonna. Try to bust them down and then run back up.
Oh, okay.
Hilltop hustle.
Yeah.
Yes.
Super.
Right. Any else? Done? Alrighty. Dylan, what's happening in water and wastewater?
Today we had some work being done at the wastewater treatment facility, just some maintenance. We had to replace some of our chemical feed piping. But I was at the drink more side with regards to the project. I received notice Tuesday, I believe, or yes, Monday rather. That the generator was supposed to be completed for a chip date this week. From the beginning of the project. That got bumped back to six twenty-one. So, three weeks behind. We still don't have any resolution from the engineering firm on our issues down there at Well Three.
For the communication, have, have, have they, weren't they supposed to present something to?
We met with them and told them our concerns with the solar setup. So they were supposed to get something back, so it was regarding a step-down transformer. Or an alternative to that, with hardwired power. The issue that we got ready to do with that is if we do end up going with the solar setup, that's an eight-week lead time on that as well. So depending on whether you make that decision or when the, when the engineering firm makes that decision, that that's the best option. And we have another eight weeks out from that, just for delivery of that.
Now, does, would that push the year warranty for that project out from that, from when it's installed then?
It would, it would, to whatever the substantial completion date is. So say the substantial completion is July tenth, for example, it'd be a year from July tenth.
So that way, if they did install the solar, we would have the winter time to see how it really works with the snow.
Correct.
And then if it doesn't work, they're responsible for finding something that does work.
That we need to get more clarification because.
That is the key.
Concerned about this wasn't a spec dollar than the bids. This was, this is something that the engineering firm came up with as an alternate. But I think we need to get reassurance on that as well, that if this doesn't work out, because the engineers are the ones paying for us out of town.
Right.
So, I think, I think we just need to get some more clarification on that and make sure that is the case, but that's a good point.
Okay.
We did give them another alternative to consider, which is a automated generator system. Where instead of depending upon solar, which is what it is. Or the step-down transformer, the, a small generator that's got an automated. On off to charge up the batteries and provide the power. So there, that's another alternative they're looking at that is a.
But then you have to fuel the generator.
That would be the, that, that, there's a trade-off on it, on any of the systems, but that would, that would definitely be the, the trade-off on that.
So really, everything with Well Three is ready to go, if we're just looking for a solution to this.
Until we actually have an actual power source or.
Right.
We don't know, and if everything's ready to go.
Okay, because we haven't actually been able to test the, the course.
Pump is ready to go, but everything else surrounding it, it controls, there's gonna be bugs that they have to work out from there. So that's the other side of it. Mark, you had just stepped out, but.
Mm-hmm.
I just, okay, yeah. So, you know, factor in six twenty-one for a shift date on the generator.
Right.
That's three weeks behind. And then potentially eight weeks from the order date for the solar panels, if that's what we have to go with. So we could be well into August.
We will be well into August.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, because after that, if we go with that solution, as you just said, we'll have to. Run some tests to make sure everything is up and running.
Right.
To bring Well Three online.
Exactly.
And yes, the one-year warranty is based on substantial completion.
Right, so we would have the winter to know.
When will be they, when will they be taking up those woodchip filled cloth?
Brian was just texting me, Brian Creed, their project manager, they should be on site. He said he's gonna be in touch with me relatively soon to do final site cleanup and pave that patch where they cut across the road to do the new Well Three.
Right.
And fourth main. So they're gonna be able to repave that as well. I, I'll have a date for you as of right now, but it will be relatively soon.
Great. So for everyone in the listening on audience, the voice you heard also was Bill Dower, talking about. Talking about the power to, to, to Well Three that we need. Perhaps we could have a little introduction?
Yep, we're happy to have Bill on as our project manager for both the road project. And, and that's Bill.
That's Bill. So if you see him walking around on the roads.
Walking around.
Feel free to stop and complain to him.
That's right. That's right. So Bill's helping us with project management on the road project, the transfer station project. And he started actually last summer with our water project, so he'll be finishing that up as well. In addition to doing the project management work, Bill's also helping coordinate efforts for the DPW crew. Until we can get the director in place. Bill and I have known each other for a long time. Bill was the White Mountain National Forest Engineer for sixteen years. And before that, we were in the same, on the same floor of the same barracks at the academy back in nineteen eighty-one, so. Very happy to have him on board. He has a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge about how the forest works, especially around us. But also just this area in general with.
And that's because.
Climate.
Before he retired, he was. With regards to the national.
Yeah, he was the national, he was the Forest Service Engineer here in the White Mountain National Forest, yep.
Great, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. It's been fun so far and working with the rest of the staff, taking on broke a little bit.
Join the club.
Kind of our pastime.
Right, great. Do you have anything else on water or wastewater, Dylan? Okay, if not, what's happening with the road project since?
Well, let me, let me start with the, the crew first. As most have started to see the fencing around the, the temporary, temporary transfer.
Right.
The contractor came, put the fence up, a big section of it was down. We don't know whether it was wind, a bear, or somebody decided they didn't like it, but either way, as a result of that, we decided to. Modify the layout a little bit to better control access and also start getting people used to. The new days and hours that they're gonna have to start getting used to. So obviously, that's all in the works, but, but. So the configuration you see now is pretty much, the ramp is ready, the, the instructor weight box will get moved at some point, once, once the transition takes place.
And we won't make that transition until we have the contractor signed on and we're all ready to go up above.
Right.
So we'll be, in the next several weeks, we'll be working on a, on a policy for, in a, in a set of procedures for operations down here. Times of operation, how we're gonna work the vehicle markings and all of that. So that'll be the, the upcoming. Select Board meetings that we'll be giving that to. We've been going out to other towns and Steve's found a good. Template that we can use from Holderness. They have an excellent operation there, so. So we're, we're hoping we can use that as our guide for coming up with our running. So we will announce that, I would anticipate several weeks before it goes into effect. It isn't gonna be, you know, a one-day thing. We'll, we'll get the word out. But people just need to be aware that it's coming and sometime, probably, if, if we get the contractors settled. It would be prior to the Fourth of July when we would, when we would implement that down here. Okay?
And they've been busy helping the rec department get the, the news, dock and ramps and docks in. And what I tell, everybody is pretty happy with how that all turned out. And, and then of course, day-to-day. Taking care of all the things that spring brings upon the town and the, the group takes care of, so just. Cleaning up here, cleaning up there, typing up things.
We'll be mowing pretty soon.
Mowing, sweeping, all that stuff is, is on the, on the horizon.
How is the Piper project going on the road?
Do you want me to do that now or?
It's a, it's an agenda item.
Okay, okay. Alright.
Yeah.
We'll just do it as an agenda item, is it? Good, good. Great, anything else in DPW?
That's, that's about it for now.
Excellent, alright, and Dave, what's happening in DPS?
Don't speak Spanish.
Uh, hola.
Yes, I told him to be wary, to disguise.
That's right.
He does this every year.
And his wife says, what, and then his wife says enough?
Well, his wife has.
She already said it.
She already said it. Usually it's.
Negotiation.
She is laughing at him, he keeps it off, but he's holding out this year.
I am. So we're just, we are planning coming up with the fishing derby. Memorial Weekend that we're getting ready for, you probably already mentioned that. We are starting the Citizens Academy next Thursday evening, so that's gonna run all the way till June fifteenth. So you've got, each night, we're just finalizing the, the agenda, but the dates are set and last I knew, we have about. Twenty-plus people already signed up.
Wow.
For attendance, so.
A big, well, it's been a number of years, so.
Been a number of years and it's, it's always been very popular and I, I'm always kind of pleasantly surprised that. How well of attendance that we have, because there are towns that are much larger than ours that don't get the numbers that we get.
What are the hours usually?
So we're gonna start up at six PM and they typically run, we like to keep it to no more than two hours. We start to lose daylight, that sort of thing. Every night will be a different topic, so to speak, whether it's police, fire, EMS.
You didn't burn anything this year?
I'm sorry?
You didn't burn anything?
Uh, we're not going to burn anything, but.
Intentionally.
On the.
Year, well, that was.
We did, yeah, we did. What we are planning on doing is we're gonna have a combined. Operation. We're actually doing a regional training here in town on June eighth. It'll be the evening, we're having Ashland, Holderness, Plymouth, Hampton, Thornton. Fire departments here, we're gonna be doing pump training. There's gonna be different stations set up around the pond. We're gonna be doing portable pumps, drafting, pumping uphill, that sort of thing, and then we're gonna kind of combine it. Into a, a one exercise, once everyone gets a chance to do all the stations. Our plan is to have the Citizens Academy folks, you know, observe and kind of participate in that, in that training, you know. Be there while we're, while we're gonna have all these towns here doing that training that evening, so we're looking forward to that.
It'd be a great opportunity for them to see the mutually arrangements that we have with all of these towns as well.
Right.
Yep, they're, they're planning on bringing out, you know, a bunch of their staff up to participate in this training too, so. We're looking, looking forward to that. I would mention the road race. This Sunday, which shouldn't, which shouldn't be too much of a big deal. We took delivery of our new tools from the Firehouse Subs Grant. While I was away, but they are, we're gonna plan on, you know, showcasing them certainly at the Citizens Academy, but. If anyone is interested, we'll, we'll show them, they're all battery-operated, spreader, cutter, and ram. But they're battery-operated, so there's no wires, no hydraulics, none of that.
Just.
Yep. So very, very impressive, just, just perhaps actually just working with Judy to close it, working on closing the grant down for that. I'm working on recruitment. We still have an open position. We did PT test, there was like, I think. Five or six that said that they were gonna show up for a PT test and one person showed up.
No.
So we had one candidate actually take the, take the physical test, still open, and we're gonna. I believe Taco and Pat, there should be another PD test coming up in the next week. So.
And that's for our vacant.
Right.
We made an offer for. A fire captain in anticipation of Jeff Droppen's retirement next month. And found a very well-qualified candidate, his name's Jim Chapin. We're very excited to have him onboard. We made him an offer this week and he accepted, so we're just finalizing. Some of the pre-employment stuff that he needs to do. He comes to us as a twelve-year firefighter, three paramedic. He was the number two in charge of best care ambulance, but unfortunately for them, but fortunate for us, they went out of business about a month ago. And so Jim is a very qualified candidate. Jeff Droppen had a lot to do with, in his recruitment. And looking for his replacement and, you know, in Jeff's words, he feels like he can retire, because it feels like he's gonna be leaving it in good hands, so.
Great.
We'll have an opportunity, once we get him, we'll be, we still need to get him sworn in and he's gonna start dated, I believe, the twenty-ninth, end of the month. Have an opportunity for you all to, to meet him.
Great.
Other than.
Anything on the police side?
Nothing on the police side. I believe, you know, Pat already talked about, you know, a few noise complaints. They do have a few cases going. With some, you know, steps of copper up at the mountain, that sort of thing, and. There was a conference, some people had a. Some issues with, you know, assault cases, that, that sort of thing, but. They're working on warrants now and. Other than that.
Permitting?
Supposed to be permitting.
Your other hat, how many hats do you have?
Yeah. They're coming in pretty steady.
Yeah, I imagine so.
The inspections, ever since I got back, it's been pretty much absorbed with just, you know, follow-up inspections and. Just got another CO application today for the House of Palm Bean Bender. So we'll be processing that one and. I did get a complaint from a member of the Conservation Commission concerned about. Silk fences. So I met with all the contractors that have active construction sites going on in town. To refresh those and clean those up. I know after two weeks of rain and after the. I know after two weeks of rain and after the snow going away, you know, the winter, they just, they need to be addressed anyways. Uh but there was a, there was a complaint received and uh so we did, I did do the follow up. I'll check next week by and make sure that all of them have taken care of those issues. Um and report back to them, but um all the, all the contractors I spoke to were, were pretty open to. Taking care of it, so.
Thank you, anything for David?
Uh we, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Um we did have the uh tower had a uh reservoir. Radiator reservoir replaced it at Krakow, we had a leak. Uh the manufacturer or the dealer uh came and repaired it. And there was no charge for the uh for the radiator, for the part itself. Uh to be replaced, so uh because. Almost. Twelve hundred bucks.
Is the ladder truck?
Yeah. Yeah. But it sounds like it was a, an issue, a regular issue, but. Uh they sent a person onsite and made those repairs. We still have one hydraulic leak in the back that. Um continues to be a little elusive and uh they're gonna send. Their text back again and see if they can't, can't try to locate it. They've already taken, he cracks at it already, so.
Have we done the order on the new truck?
Yes, we completed the paperwork.
Yep. Yep, uh paperwork's in and uh.
So we're in the queue.
We're in the queue.
Locked in at a measly seven hundred and seventeen.
A queue that's two years, three years long or whatever, two and a half years long.
Yeah.
Quite a queue. Okay. Uh administrative services, Steve, what's happening among the paper pushers?
Thanks, Rick. Did you, I had to jump out, work, did you talk about the signage that you're looking at um or? Uh so work is looking at a sign package of some sort coming up with some kind of a sign package for the, the dock area. Um and I just wanted to let you know, you had both had a concern about a sign that was uh.
The corner of the library.
Corner of the library, um your suggestion was to maybe change the wording, some of the letters, letters were peeling off.
Yeah.
A livermore trailhead, uh so I'm gonna incorporate that with work sign order. Um and I just wanted to, you know, keep you updated because.
Okay, sure.
Pointed that out a couple of, couple of meetings ago.
We, we wanna do that also in wood, the same green wood.
Yeah, the same, that's what I was thinking.
Other signs, road signs, we'll, we'll need DPW to. Go around and get us an inventory of missing road signs. And we should do one order.
Lump it all together.
Yeah, lump it all together.
Yeah, because we were, as a part of that, um it's going to be some of the beach signs where the docks. Fading the things that we don't want to have it on the dock and then.
Right, but we had talked about it, I think, at previous meeting.
Don't feed.
No quackers, practice required.
Right.
So yeah, that's, that's sort of where it started, so I don't know if we should, I don't know how fast they can get what they need, but we should probably be ordering our.
Well, those can be, those can be metal, the, the water from the signs can be metal.
Standard.
Standard metal, but those can be turned around very quickly.
Okay.
So let's get those done separately, yeah.
Well, we'll talk.
I wanna.
Great.
Something else that's fishing related, but not in the sense of Kirby.
Um we, I wanna show you just a couple of fishing emails, email fishing that we've received very recently. These are pretty good, you know, the first one here, you'll see that. The sender is actually an employee, the name of an employee that works here.
Right.
The email address that's next to his name is pretty unfamiliar. The subject line is an, states awareness on D V issue, direct deposit. Where he goes on to state that he's having um issues with his bank and would like uh us to set up a new. Checking account, uh direct deposit account for them. Uh this was captured by Microsoft and placed into the junk email, so um it wasn't immediately noticed by Judy. The second email that you see is again from the same employee's name, whereas they have replicated. The dot org domain to precisely what our dot org domain was. And you'll notice in the subject line, a continuation saying, hey, when can you make this happen? So now showing some urgency about the reflects and again goes on to state that. Um the direct deposit details needed to be updated. Um so I just showing you, this again was captured by our junk holder, but. Showing you that this cybersecurity threat is real, it's happening, it's happening to us, these people are fishing for information. And that um we're doing, in my opinion, everything I think we can right now to protect the, protect the town from an attack. Uh so the dot gov transition is going okay, all of our email addresses now, you'll notice. We'll have our do, new domain, which is watergovalleynh.gov. Um the next step will be to get our website tran- transitioned over to a dot gov website and um.
People can still write to the old because there's a transition, but I think you mentioned.
Yeah, that's a good point, so all of our old dot org domains are still active and will re- remain active for at least a year. And all of the emails going to those accounts will get redirected to the dot gov.
I got one today saying by Norton anti drug antivirus is gonna be updated for four hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Yeah.
Through PayPal and blah, blah, blah.
If you have any questions, call this number, so you can give us your credit card number, right?
Great.
Uh people, people fall for that.
They do. Um and the only other item that I had for you is, I wanted to bring to your attention that. The uh resort is requesting an increase in our. Monthly rent for the post office that we operate at Town Square.
This cam went up.
This cam went up, exactly, um. A little non-traditional, that's second time in just under a year. That they're requesting an increase in rent, prior to that, as I understand it, it was many years that. We went on with the four hundred dollar a month rent.
Yeah, they're getting on a tighter schedule now with uh with the cam uh increases and I'm expecting. Cause the last one was at November, right?
Yes.
And um from what I understand, it, the spring is sort of the usual fiscal, whatever. So I think from here on out, it'll be the spring that we'll see it.
Okay.
I just can't, uh common area maintenance for Town Square. Um but hopefully.
How much is, how much of it increases it?
Uh fifteen percent in a year, this time we went from um four twenty to four fifty one. But we started at four hundred. We're at four hundred for one.
And this is just the post office for, for rental, renting the space for the post office?
Correct.
And it's. Town square wide, right?
That's all Town Square merchants, yep. No, no one's getting singled out.
That's all I had.
I have one quick, I meant to ask um concerning um. Uh DPW, is there a schedule yet for the restriping of any of the roads? From here, not yet, okay.
And with the sharos and stuff you've put down with that, okay.
You still pursuing the uh week versus two week uh? Pay discussion?
Yeah, so. We're gonna be transitioning from a weekly payroll here for all town employees into a bi-weekly payroll. And that date will be effective January, uh July seventh. Um will be the first bi-weekly pay.
Nothing's changed from our discussion about this.
Nope, the only thing that's changed is that I put, um I have a draft of an information sheet that I'm gonna hand out to all of our employees. That really outlined why this changed, why we're making this change, um how will it affect them and what they can do to prepare. And um we have our annual benefits fair coming up on May twenty sixth. Um that we're gonna be holding here for all of our employees to learn about new benefit offerings that we have. Um to make changes to their healthcare coverages when uh they can do that. And we're also gonna be available for all of our employees if they have any particular questions related to the bi-weekly payroll change. Um if they're, you know, inquiring about how it might affect their federal withholdings or. Their HSA contributions or anything like that, Judy and I will be here to answer their questions.
Anything else for Steve? Good, alright, let's move on to calendar review, our next regular select board meeting is on twenty four May here at three P M. Planning board meets tomorrow, eleven May here at eight A M. Um and our special town meeting is scheduled for thirty one May, six P M at the school gym. Um and the other one, other potential meeting, I think we had talked sometime in the past about. Having a joint school board, select board meeting uh. Around the end of the school year, we're looking at twenty four May as a possibility. Is that still possible? I mean, I don't know if the school board has anything they like to talk to us about.
Either, I will.
It'll check and see and uh we'll be happy to host it here again, yeah.
Yeah, you wanna mention the purpose of this school, this special town meeting?
Well, this, thank you, yes, the.
Listening audience.
The special town meeting is to uh review the town's current uh noise ordinance. Select, select board ordinance number eight and to discuss uh any uh further changes to it. This is based on changes that were made to the noise ordinance. Uh at the town meeting on, was it fifteen March? I'm forgetting the exact date now. Where we did make a couple considerable changes based on votes and subsequently there was a. A. Communication with the board uh by uh a number of people, like thirty some odd in total and a number of different vehicles. Uh emails and and attending at meetings uh that asked us to reconsider. Uh that particular uh vote and so that's what we're planning to do, I think we'll have a public hearing. Uh on, at our next uh, the twenty fourth of May, we have a public hearing. Uh just before our select board meeting, that will be at three o'clock. Uh it's for any public input uh on the one warrant article uh that I believe we've approved. And has it been posted yet?
For what?
The warrant article, yes, it has been, should be put, right.
It is.
And um. That's all that comes to mind at the top of the head, uh Patty, did you wanna add anything to this?
One issue with the supervisors.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually sending an email to town council right now, asking what our options are.
Um it needs to be that Saturday of the twentieth and none of the supervisors are in town.
Oh, okay.
What, what happens on the twentieth?
There needs to be uh supervisors of the checklist meeting.
They have to approve the voting list, the checklist for that meeting.
It has to be on that day.
Has to be on a Saturday, six to thirteen days before the special town meeting.
And the twenty seven is only four days before town meeting, so it can't, it doesn't fall within that window.
Potentially then we could be changing.
Yeah.
The date of the town, the town meeting, push it back, essentially. Okay, well, let's see how that.
Let's see what they.
Plays out, the town council says. I'm sorry, anything else uh? Patty, okay, anything on that? Okay, alright, I think I, lead of the. Calendar review, let's move on to finally new, new business. So the first item in new businesses, they review the board meeting scheduling. So, yeah, so I think you just, uh no decisions really uh need to be made right away, but I think we were looking at potentially moving our. Uh regular meetings from the second and fourth uh Wednesdays of the month to the second and fourth Thursdays of the month.
Or the first and third.
Or first.
Or the first and third, that's right, so we don't uh, we don't uh, uh yes, uh conflict with the planning board, which is on the second Thursday.
Yep.
In the morning, uh for the month.
And then you, we were interested in talking about the time as well.
Right, looking more at like a five o'clock.
Right.
To make it more available for people who need to work.
Right.
They could attend.
And, and one of the concerns was that was the department heads.
Yes, staggering attendance, if that needs to be done, if everyone isn't here for long days.
So I, I, I guess the point here is, do we still wanna continue along and moving in that direction? Do we wanna make a decision? Also think about it a little bit longer and. It's our call.
I'm retired.
Yes, so the time, uh roughly speaking, yes, the time and day is of not great consequence to me either. Generally speaking, I think Wendy's the only really working person here. Uh so uh what would help with her schedule uh, I think works for, for me and, and, and for Bob.
And I, I would like, it's always been a little bit of a issue that I've had when things ha, so many things happen during the day, so people who do actually have to work.
Right.
Regular hours, business hours, can't attend, so. I think it would be nice, we've been talking in the past about trying to get more uh public engagement.
Would, I, I suppose we should do the same time both things, but you could, you could do one meeting a month. At five and the other meeting at an early time and just.
Well, I think by staggering, you guys would only be coming in once a month, basically, instead of both of the meetings. Unless there was a specific agenda item for you. As far as department head updates are concerned.
Yeah, we could try to do that early in the meeting like we do now and.
Yeah.
Try to get him, get him out.
Be the first thing, I mean. If you guys wanna move in that direction, move to the first and third Thursdays at five o'clock? Is that, is that what we're looking at?
And part of this discussion is, what do you wanna do in the, in the summer? We have historically done one meeting per month. Well, I don't, I don't Bob, I'm not talking about the waste of a treatment facility, but I'm, I'm talking about our regular meetings.
Right.
So do you wanna try to do that again, or do you wanna just say hang that?
It's, it's gonna be another tough year, I think.
I think, I think you're right.
Just to keep it on the schedule.
There.
Yeah.
We're gonna keep them on the schedule then.
Yeah.
So can we start this in July?
You wanna wait till July or?
Well, I.
Travel.
It'll screw me up.
Oh, that's right, okay, right, so uh July, the first Thursday would be the sixth.
Be the what?
Sixth July, I believe is the first Thursday, there'll be six twenty July.
The sixth and the twentieth?
Yes. At five o'clock? And then just follow on with that, I'm just going down the Thursdays the rest of the year. We will conflict with school board meetings, which are at four o'clock. On, on uh the second, the second Thursdays that we meet.
Then you once a month?
I mean, once a month, yeah.
The third Thursday.
On the third, yeah, we're moving to first and third Thursday, so. They start at four and we would be starting at five, so if there was somebody who wanted to attend both, it may be an issue.
So the, the second one in June would be when?
You mean in July?
No, in June.
Oh, what, what would it be under the, under the current schedule?
Yeah.
It, it would, it is uh blah, 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 uh the twelve. Well, am I in July? Sorry, June, June, yes, fourteenth.
Fourteen.
Fourteenth and twenty eighth are the two scheduled dates we have for three o'clock.
But it, it would be moving to seven and twenty one. In June.
Not.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, you're.
So we'll wait until July.
Alright, so yes, it would be the fourteenth and the twenty eighth.
Fourteenth and twenty eighth, and then we'll shift to the sixth and twentieth.
So we'll win in the twenty eighth and then win in the sixth, but I guess that's okay.
Yeah, well, we can see how it goes, I mean, we can potentially uh.
Yeah.
Push it back, there are some times where we don't meet. Technically, we don't meet uh and it's a three week.
That's gonna happen.
Anyway, cause that's just the way the calendar.
Yeah.
Calendar works.
Okay.
We can see that may be a good time to do it. Okay. Alright.
Is there a privilege of a school before, you know? If this young man needs to.
Oh, we asked earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Um so, I'm here for a school project.
Mm-hmm.
And I see that a signature to like my teacher to make sure that I was here.
You need to, you need to be informed.
Yeah, give us your name and tell us about this school project and. So, where's this, where's the project?
Um, so it's for civics and it's about. It's just like, I think what I, what's your meeting as well, and I have to like talk about like the setup of it, and when I walk in and then what you guys talk about. Those are probably like three pages, I would say, and then.
Get an agenda?
Yeah. Put a bunch of stuff on the back, that's basically it, and it's just. I have to turn that in after, it's not really like, you know, compared to it, like pages about something.
Pretty standard, we got other kids in here.
Sure. Sure.
Peyton Long.
Yeah.
And you were supposed, you were supposed to pick out the best select board in the state?
It's only, it's only top and select board.
That's his own, yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Bring it on over.
All right. You're the, the boss.
This. Okay.
You been a. Where are you, are you in, I'm sophomore. Where are you from?
I live here.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Stosnattin'.
Kim and my phone, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't he look a little different? I didn't recognize you.
They grow up.
It's only been a year.
Really?
Anything else?
No, specifically it's.
Not a problem. Okay. So we've done that, we've uh, reviewed, anything else on the, the board meeting scheduling?
I appreciate everyone's flexibility with that.
Not a problem. So we have uh, next new business is review the email uh, concerning the ice arena.
Yes, so I'm just opening up the, the uh, uh, we, we received that email from Fred.
Right.
Uh, from the hockey academy. And um. This uh, you, uh, both of you were not here when we extended um, the lease. Um. With the hockey academy, uh, but when we did, they, there was a discussion about capital improvements that needed to be made. Um. On the arena and we had some money that was put away for it. But it totaled well, almost five hundred thousand dollars in total improvements that needed to be made.
Mm-hmm.
At the time, we think had a hundred and ninety two thousand or something like that. Under the original lease agreement, the town is responsible for capital maintenance of the building. Um, so anything that would fit within the C I P as far as equipment or the roof or siding or whatever on the building. Is the town's responsibility.
Right.
Like they're building envelope and there's.
The building.
But the equipment inside.
And all the equipment inside, that's a capital improvement, so here you see uh, chiller replacements, evaporator condensers, brine pumps. Zamboni, uh, the ammonia detection system, so they, um, the hockey academy. There was also, I'm sorry, let me go back to the original lease, there were, there was an allowance in there that if. The hockey academy spent any money towards these improvements, that the town approved. That it would be considered at the time that they purchased the uh, the arena. Okay, because it was a lease purchase agreement.
Right.
These uh, these improvements that are not highlighted, um, they have made uh, chiller replacement. They have done the brine pump, uh, air separator, um, and. You can see the evaporator condenser is there as well, um, they did partials on the chiller and the brine pump. Um, and they did uh, repair, so so far they have done two hundred and seventy four thousand eight hundred and twenty eight dollars in improvements.
Do, do they give us uh, in invoices showing that they?
Yes, they have.
And they have to be, it had to be approved by us ahead of.
And it has to be approved by us and all of that, and so we did uh, approve all of that. So, um, they, I think what his email is saying was they need to do additional improvements. Um, I uh, let me go back to the. To the email itself, so do you have any questions about this, this, the, the list that the exhibit B that he attached?
Nope.
Okay. The exhibit B is this last.
It, it is the last, yeah, and so he says in his email. Sorry, um. The. Uh, I, he has not indicated, he just, I think he's looking more as a confirmation from us that we're recognizing.
But they spent two hundred and seventy five of the five hundred and ten.
Correct.
Thousand that.
So I, I did not want to send anything back until you would have a, a chance to see the list and ask any questions of me.
Which, which the uh, the base pr- purchase price that we deduct this stuff from?
I, I'm sorry, I do not have the lease here, uh, I want to say that the number that we agreed to. Uh, it has not been in, it is not, not the uh, inflation number, but I think the original number was five hundred and sixty nine thousand. Something along.
I was gonna say five seventies, but I remember.
Five sixty.
But I have in my mind.
So is that fixed forever or is that?
Well, that's why I don't, I, I don't know if, if there's an inflationary clause in there. Um, I know that we were, um, I believe it was a set price because we were saving. So much money in the operations uh, of the, uh, of the arena, I don't think we inflated it, but I, I need to check that language.
So if they do this total approved capital improvements of five, ten.
Yes.
Change, then they would essentially.
Sixty.
So if it's five hundred and something thousand, they're at four, they'll be at four eighty six after this, so.
Yes.
Yeah, no, this is something we've.
We end, end up selling it at some point for a dollar probably.
Well, yeah.
But yes.
Yeah.
But we will, we don't have to pay them either.
They, as part of this as well, even though it's a town owned property, we have been getting the property tax amount.
Yeah, right.
From them.
I think, I think in one of the previous meetings, you were gonna get us copies of the, of the lease.
Uh, I thought I had sent it to you.
No.
Did I not? Okay, um.
Okay. I think, I think I got it.
I'll get it, I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
So th- these amounts they're gonna spend uh, this year, is that the?
I, I don't know that, he's just looking for confirmation of the two seventy five number, or recognition of what they've spent already.
I mean, as long as, I guess you've seen the invoices and.
Yeah.
It's in line with the agreement.
Yeah.
And so this is more of an update, this is what we've spent so far of the uh, of the improvements that you had approved. Which totaled at the time five hundred and ten. So. Here it is.
So.
Arena lease. Yeah, I knew we had it.
Well, there's, remember, there's an lease and then there's the amendment, I'll send you both documents, right?
It sounds like um. They've spent two seventy four, two hundred and seventy four thousand previously.
Eight twenty eight, yeah.
And now if they're gonna spend four hundred and eighty six thousand. They're, they're over the purchase price.
Uh.
If I understand that correctly.
Four hundred and eighty six thousand.
All right above the highlighted bit.
Looks like the new items add up to four hundred and eighty six thousand.
No, that's, well, he's not committing to spending that, he's saying that that's the remaining total. Of what they, and the other part of this is if they go over that original total price, that's at their cost.
Right. Why don't we uh, why don't we schedule a, 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 a discussion of.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we, so we'll just, we'll just acknowledge receiving this email and that it is in line with uh, with our agreement with. With the hockey academy, we do acknowledge that.
Yep.
And then we can refresh our memories.
But yes, if they, if they did the rest of these at these prices, it would be for four eighty six. If they added these four numbers.
That's new, a new, a new four eighty six.
Four eighty.
Which, which as I said, that puts us over the, the.
The green.
And that is, that is okay, they can, can, that is their investment going forward.
Right.
So we agreed, now whether they'll come back and ask to negotiate, you know, for the rest of the lease, you know.
Right.
Timeframe.
They're only what, three years in?
They're only like that, right, a ten year, ten year lease.
Extension, so.
So, we would need to get Fred in here, make sure, but look at the lease arrangement and, and we'll.
Yeah, let's, let's, schedule a in-depth discussion of where we are and where we could be going with this.
Yeah.
Everyone's okay with?
Yeah.
With that, all right. So the community power terms um, of office for approval.
Right, so the community power committee has gotten together, we need, so you'll be making annuals.
Right.
Uh, reappointments or appointments, just like you do for the planning board and the conservation commission, they have. Um, of, of agreed to these, to take on these terms of office and it gives you a rotation.
Right, so do we need to list every person or can I just?
I mean, we can.
Per the email?
Yes.
Okay, so um, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Per the email from the water of valley renewable energy committee to town manager on Tuesday to May. Uh, I will um, make a motion to agree to the listed individuals. As members of the renewable energy committee and for the years uh, that they start.
Second that.
One favor?
Yeah, all right.
All right, okay. They got a good number of people. Right.
Yep.
Eight, eight people, and the, the term of office for the record, anywhere from one. To three years, just to get the rotation going, then everyone is a three year, three year rotation. Are they all full members? I don't remember.
Those, those are all full.
So they have eight full, right.
They have a full.
Right, okay. Alrighty, uh, tax interest abatement request.
Yep, so then the Nachmans, you have an email there.
Yep.
Nachmans, they, um. This is the only outstanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, issue on their account, and I checked their account going back to two thousand and seven, they've never had a, had an issue.
And we, will we agree to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like it was just a, whatever.
Yeah, it was a loss, I mean, sometimes you have lost bills and that happens.
Okay, do we need to be any more specific than that? I thought we agreed to the abatement request.
To abate the interest uh, in fees as requested.
Okay, I think Bob just uh, made that motion, so do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, favor?
All right.
Okay.
Um, I would also like to point out while we're talking about taxes, we have prepared the, the lean list. Um, we, I did abate uh, several of these, um, we have one to.
These were the, under the, what was it, fifty dollars or whatever, what did we give you the authority?
Under fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
It's, it's a twenty one dollar fee, so, um, you know, some of these folks, it was again a late payment or something where. Interest of nine dollars and even seven cents accrued, so.
Hmm.
Um, right, rather than process those.
And at a, at a select board meeting uh, last year, we, we increased the amount that the town manager has the authority to abate. So it doesn't have to bring to a vote, because we were voting on like nine, nine dollars and eighty one cents, three dollars and seventy two cents.
And so this is, this is the, the abatement. And the interest charges will, uh, this is the actual lean amounts, if you want to look at them, the orange highlighted. Those have full interest uh, charges, this is what would actually be abated.
Okay.
So, oh, do we have more delinquencies than we don't?
No, no, fewer actually.
Down, yeah.
That what happens is because of the sales that are going on, uh, every time there's a sale, everything that's past due is paid off. I think this list is twenty, twenty some odd at the helm. It's only, so that's actually less than what we normally do.
Is there anybody that's more than a year?
Yeah, we have a couple, they're in the town report. Um, there's, there's a few that are. Better longer, so you, um, I'm sorry, I didn't draw the lines, just draw the three lines avenue.
Oh, okay, which one would you want, is it the?
The second page. Yeah, there you go, there you go, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. To get that study again.
So at what point do we take any action, or is that, is it automatic?
Uh, it's automatic, there's an eighteen month period, um, that the lien will be perfected and then we can.
Right.
The next step would be to uh, perfect the lien and then we can uh, dispose of the property by tax sale if we want.
And this is, I mean, twice a year on the tax bill, it's noted that.
Yeah.
You're delinquent and this is the amount with the interest.
And they're gonna get a, they're gonna get a notice, a separate.
Notice.
And it gets, it gets, um, in, if they don't pay this within thirty days, then it will be sent to the registry and recorded. So if anyone does a title search, it would show up as.
You need to sign, could you sign?
Sign the second.
Uh, second, third page. I think it's the third page, no? Have we, has the town ever?
Not since I've been here.
So after the last seventeen.
We did, we did get pretty close on two.
Yeah.
We managed to. Come to an agreement with the property owner, we don't want to be a renter at the Golden Eagle or the Black Fair, so, that's what we did.
Alrighty, um, seller contract.
Yeah, this is the annual contract, we actually should have done this back immediately after town meeting. Um, this is the uh, annual renewal of our contract with them, um. It's reviewed every year, um, this contract is uh, through July thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Um, that would be, this will be the last agreement we have with them, if the timing at the Bethlehem landfill continues the way that it's going.
Right. So then what?
Well.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's the.
So is there, is there an escalator in this?
There is, um, there is an escalator, it is linked to the C P I.
I think we had reviewed it, right?
It's negotiated.
Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
Yeah.
And that's actually negotiated with North Country Council and the Pembroke Baker.
Right, so we're still in that consortium.
We are still in the consortium.
So it's five percent or C P I.
Yeah.
Whichever's greater.
Yep.
So why is town transfer station defined at sixteen twenty nine New Hampshire Route one seventy five? What's the third and address?
Uh, because they probably didn't update their, it's a, it's, it's a format.
Okay. And so the references to the Vermont rules is? And so the references to the Vermont rules, is that also a format open?
That.
So that's for real, even though we end, okay.
Yeah.
So how does that work? Like, isn't Vermont?
I think they take some of their, I think they take some of their waste or recycling or whatever they do from Bethlehem, uh, over to Vermont.
Okay.
Yeah, but I will check, I will check with North Country Council and make sure.
I saw it's headquarters in Rutland.
And, and their.
Oh, okay.
But I will change the, I will change the date or the.
Address.
I had dinner with him once a lifetime ago.
And then, so the key schedule is not done by ton, it's done by haul. It's like. That's the way it's always been?
Yeah. Uh. No, it should, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm gonna bring this back to you at the next one.
Okay.
Yep. Because he did send the wrong, this is not the one you looked at before.
Okay.
Before.
Right, before Wendy joined the board, because I thought we had reviewed it and we agreed, because it was part of our discussion whether go with the seller or win waste.
I will find it and send it to you.
And we decided.
By the ton.
That's what I thought.
It is the time.
By the ton.
Okay.
So I will find it.
Okay, so we'll just review that at the next meeting. Okay, the letter to New Hampshire Electric Co-op regarding power outages in Water River Valley.
Yeah.
This is this.
Yep.
And you want me to sign it?
Well, no, not yet, because there's still questions on here. I'm, I'm not sure how far back you wanted to go or see, so you have here in the past X. Right, I mean, well, no, I mean, however far back you want, but our service, at least when we lived here, it's been a long time, but, um, you know, as of ten years ago, we had pretty good service. You know, we did not have many outages at all.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know how long you want to go.
More recent, I think.
Yeah, it's past winter that really stood out. In, in my mind, we lose power frequently, but I'm always stressed out about lasers and, and whatnot, so everyone really stands out in my mind.
Did you want to say something like in, in, uh, over the past year, there's been a noticeable number of.
By which means?
Of service interruptions, I mean, this is just to get the conversation going, right? I mean, more than anything else with their.
Yeah, because it's definitely getting.
Service rep.
Grading in some way or other.
Right, which, which, yeah, we can say there've been a noticeable number which, uh, uh, and appears to be getting, we want to capture that, right? A noticeable number over the past year, which seems to be a.
Well, I already said that it was out of character once.
Oh, is that, okay, right. Yeah, I haven't seen this letter before, I'm sorry.
It's a letter to Bill Johnson?
Yeah, he's our accountant. That's where we would start. I called him and let him know that it's coming.
Yeah.
And this can include Tom if you wanted to.
I think that makes sense for the Resort Association business.
Sure.
Side of it.
Yeah, as I said, it's just to get, get him here and have a conversation and, and he may be come prepared.
He may.
Tell us that our observations are. Okay, no, great. It'd be good just to have the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you gonna put that together and?
I'll just call you.
Call me, I'll come and just sign. You guys okay with that? Letter essentially along these lines, I can sign, okay.
Okay.
We'll do that. All right, that completes, um, new business, I think, was there, was there a exemption request? Want to handle that legal business?
You want to do right now?
Yeah.
So we have a, uh, a request, um, from Rob Wilson, uh, for, uh, a tax exemption under Disabled Veterans uh, statute. Um, we've checked his information, the accessories, uh, have confirmed it. Um, so he is eligible for the exemption.
Or you sign it.
Is that just a state exemption?
It's a state law exemption, yeah.
Okay, and what's, what's the, uh?
The exemption.
It's gonna be the certain disabled veteran.
Yeah. And, and that is a full, it's a hundred percent exemption of, on his property tax.
Oh.
Yep.
Oh.
He has a service-connected disability.
So the, the, the town doesn't have to have its own ordinance on that?
We adopted the state, the state ordinance, yeah.
So is this new or is this something we've been doing every year?
Oh, this is the first one, I think. I think we had a partial, uh, a partial disability exemption. Um, but not, not one that's fully disabled.
And they did, they did change the law last year, um, for eligibility requirements for the, for the veterans.
Correct.
General, not this, this has been on there for.
This has been, yeah, for a long, a long.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we going to, um, in the packet, I noticed it was a request from the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Do I pass on that right now?
Okay. You do not have to worry about it.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we can move into old business now. So we'll start off with the major, I think, uh, piece of news is signing the purchase and sales agreement for the land purchase, the land in question being the lot owned by Tyrell Development, which is located next to our current uh, wastewater treatment facility, uh, and we need to purchase this property in order to build, have the land we need to build our new wastewater treatment facility. So I think we've had some discussions on the matter already, uh, as part of a negotiation. So this is bringing into, uh, public, uh, into the public, uh, the result of those negotiations and what the Select Board, uh, uh, would like to do, we have to do the voting in public and I believe we agreed to a price of four hundred thousand dollars. That's the, the amount. We can get the, we need the legal language for the lot, uh, number and size of right now, which is.
This is a conditional purchase and sale agreement.
Right.
Um, the, there are several conditions. There has to be a public hearing for public input.
Right.
Um, so the board would be voting today to.
Move forward.
Sign the P and S.
Right.
And then fill out the conditions of the P and S. They have supplied us with the, with the environmental report associated with that lot. I didn't think you wanted three hundred and fifty-eight pages of information in your packet, so, uh, I, I have that link if anyone wants to take a look at it, or I can just print off the executive summary and provide that to you, uh, if you want. Um, and then, uh, hold the hearing and then after, uh, the public hearing, then you would, uh, vote to move forward with the closing and we would turn it over to the town attorney. They would complete the paperwork and we'd have a closing like any other.
Okay.
Parson.
And we're looking for a public hearing for the beginning of, at the beginning of the June fourteenth.
Yes.
Regular meetings, two meetings.
That's two meetings from.
From now.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, alright, but there's no agreement for us to sign.
It isn't in the packet.
Um. Bye. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, that's. Uh, yes, this agreement of sale, I have a May this, yeah, day of twenty twenty-two. Right, this has all the.
Yeah, you can make a pen and ink change to that.
Okay.
So this is twenty-three, but this is the original.
Oh, let me get it to that.
At the end of page one on that, does it cut off the address as well? The one on fourteen ten.
Lane, yeah.
Oh, is it on the back?
Is that in the orig- is it in the original?
On the back.
It's on.
It's the one, yeah, on the original.
Right here.
Yeah. Okay, so, we need a motion, uh, so I will put in here the tenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
That's how long we've been working on it.
Really?
So you need a motion to approve signing the additional purchase and sale?
That's before us today, uh.
Last, turn it over, Rich, in, on the last page.
You mean?
Yep, there you go, turn the whole packet over.
There we go.
So go ahead and make that motion then.
Second it. All in favor? Bye, right, alright. Well, actually, it was all this morning.
We just have to turn it?
Yeah. This is the, the last page, this blank. So we will have a public hearing on the matter on fourteen, on the fourteenth of June at three P M. Just one, last page. Alrighty. So I think we had the water project update already from Dylan. Um, let's go ahead and bring Bill back into the discussion. Talk to us about the road project.
Alright, the paving project has officially commenced, although it is on a very slow start. And that is due mainly to some consultations with Dixase. Uh, come to find that last week, the, I don't know whether it's statewide or area-wide, but the contract with the previous Dixase company uh, was terminated and they brought on a new Dixase contractor. The previous one had started, but not done a very good job, uh, and didn't complete it either. And so the new one has come on board and is fixing what was done incorrectly by the previous one. But also, there are a lot of utilities in the ground under this, under the roads. So it's taken, uh, pretty much all so far this week, uh, they have three guys here today.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're working diligently, uh, but technically Piper is not allowed to put a bucket in the ground until Dixase has signed off that they have completed. Uh, they're hoping to get a, uh, if they, the blessing to begin with some of the, uh, side, the driveway culverts tomorrow. It's all gonna depend upon, uh, Pi- Piper as finishing up project in Bedford. And so some of that crew will be moving here, uh, definitely by next week. But tomorrow, there may be some artwork actually started, uh, with the blessing of Dixase, that, that, that they can start in areas that are already marked and are known not to have any utilities. So they might be starting tomorrow. Um, you al- also may have noticed that, that the, uh, I think it's a conference center parking lot, they've started mobilizing, there's a couple of big excavators and a small one there, they brought in some material, some pipe, so they're, they're getting, they're getting geared up to get moving, but, uh, if they get started tomorrow, that'll be the beginning of what's gonna be a pretty busy summer with, with, uh, getting, getting, uh, pipes in first. As they, they have a lot of, uh, conduit and utilities to work around. So I have reached out and spoken with and met with several of the condo, uh, owners' presidents. Uh, point out some drainage issues, met with Will also, as he.
Will Lambert, right?
Will Lambert, as he oversees quite a few of the ma- uh, maintenance agreements with condos. So they're all, uh, they know who to call if there's any issues or questions. And I think that's about it on the project, except that uh, being somewhat new to the project and, and learning the town and learning the project, I've, I've noticed that there, the section of forty-nine.
No, Valley Road.
Well, let me start, let me start with the one that's in batching.
Yeah, it's Valley Road.
Forty-nine.
Okay, so it is.
Valley Road.
Uh, forty-nine ends at.
Triple I and Valley intersection.
Yeah, I told you, I'm learning. Alright, so Valley Road from Tecumseh to, uh, Davos Way, which is the next drive off of Valley Road, is in just as bad, if not, uh, worse condition than Valley from from, uh, Triple I up to Tecumseh.
Yeah.
And so then I'm looking at the, uh, section of Snows Brook from Boulder Path over to, uh, Village, which is in pretty darn good shape, uh, relatively compared to the other section. And so I've suggested the mark that we look at, uh, possibly extending, it, it's basically, I just set the numbers to, to Piper to get a preliminary estimate, but looking at, uh, four hundred and twenty-five extra feet on.
Going down Valley, okay.
To get that, pretty much done, uh, at least the worst part of it. And then, uh, leave alone for now, depending upon pricing, we might get a one-inch overlay on, uh, Snows Brook from Boulder Path o- over to, uh, Village, but minimally, put the bike path and walking path, leave that in the, in the contract, so.
Right.
Piper is working on an estimate, we obviously will have to bring H E B into it at some point. But I'm hoping, uh, Piper, Piper thinks it makes a lot of sense. The, the main difference is, the work on Valley Road is a full box reconstruction, be, that's why it's in such bad shape because it needs a better base. We're over there on, uh, Snows Brook between Boulder Path and Village.
That's actually Valley too, by the way.
But, so Valley goes, okay.
Yeah.
To Boulder.
So, so, Snows Brook ends at Boulder Path, alright.
Yeah, you're getting both ends, you're getting both ends of Valley.
To learn it. Thought I had this all down. Anyway, anyway, um, that, that only is getting a, a, a surface reconstruction. So, that's gonna give, give us a preliminary estimate.
It's gonna be a surface plu- plus the, um, plus bike path.
Bike path.
Yes.
The, there would be no bike path. The thing that's gonna save us, well, it won't save us money because we're putting the bike path in, so. Never mind.
So we're still, we're still move the, uh, the parking across the streets?
Yep, Bill and I have talked about that. The road, our road crew will do that when they're done.
Makes sense, I think.
Right, so you're saying.
Gets.
Right.
This section of Valley, I think, done to where it's in much, much better shape.
Ride Davos and not go all the way to New Peak, and it's just a, it's X amount of feet.
It's only because of, now, if, if you want us to put it in, we can, it will be more. But we have, we have monies available to do it. If you want to go all the way to New Peak, we can get a price for that.
Does it need it? I mean, is it?
Well, from Davos to, all the way to Boulder Path is in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
Okay, I think there's one, there's, there's one bad spot, it's.
There are a couple of bad spots associated with some, some drains.
Right.
That I think could be easily patched and given some life.
I don't think beyond Davos.
Isn't it needed? Okay, no, just because, I was looking for a natural, um, town road break, you know, two town roads.
Yeah, when you have heavy equipment here and trucks rolling this way, one option could be put a with a skin coat, one-inch overlay or whatever on that section, which will give it a, another good ten, fifteen years of life. Uh, so that's a consideration that.
It's got a good base. It was built to the state, it was built to state's best.
Might have been forty-nine.
When it was put in, when it was forty-nine, so.
And that will get us from town road to.
Town road.
Town road.
Yeah.
As opposed to a driveway, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the entrance to Village, Chicago.
It's, what's the difference, really, what, what?
Well, I think just the idea.
With, there's nothing in the plan when you look at the road reconstruction list.
For Valley.
That H E B gave us, Valley Road is at the very, near the very bottom of that.
But I'm just thinking with all this equipment and the people here, if it's gonna improve it. Potentially ten, fifteen years to take it out to Noon Peak, depending what the cost is, if we're talking about.
And we can have, we can have them give the price, we don't have to do it.
And that way I'd.
Do the skin coat on top of that?
Yeah, just a skin.
Yeah, that's, that's really all I think it needs right now.
It, there's no.
Yeah, I mean.
You walk there now every day, right?
Yeah, I always, yeah, I'm not sure it needs to be done, but if, if it's not a whole lot, then.
Then we're done with it for ten.
For that little section.
Ten, it is a little section.
Eventually, we do at least a skin coat on all of Valley, is that correct, or that's way at the very end and?
Uh, it's a.
Depending on what it is, yeah, with the road. It's like whenever, whatever decade we. We get it, yeah, I was just thinking of the equipment here.
Before the heavy, the heavy construction begins in the downtown area. You know, we should, you know, I, I wouldn't pay much of Valley Road.
At all, right.
That we have to until that big construction.
Okay.
Which may be never.
I didn't say anything.
Right, well, if you guys are okay with it, why don't we just see what.
Yeah, we, we just wanted to let you know that we're looking into it, we'll put some numbers back once we have them, and once everybody's had a chance to. The, but so far, it's making a lot of sense.
I was surprised to see a couple times, I saw a Piper guy on the bridge. Um, on Valley Road.
Yeah, they set up, uh.
As it goes over the, as the.
There's a reference, there's a surveying reference point on the bridge.
That's what they've set up?
No, that's the H E B surveyor, they, they are here surveying all of the utilities so that they can put them on the land.
I didn't know, I saw a Piper truck there, but anyway.
Well, but they both need to use that reference point.
Right.
A little cross there.
Yeah.
They use.
Yeah, they have that.
But Piper is doing it also, because they now have equipment that they download. GPS data right into the excavator, for instance, and the excavator will tell them when they're about to hit a utility line.
Well, that's good.
A I. Right.
Yeah.
This, 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 pretty soon they'll be digging. Right, assuming our. Where they, where they're supposed to be, right? That's the other issue.
This guy you're seeing around town, he, he's, he's duplicating the survey, but for a different reason, basically.
This construction, i- if it starts tomorrow, is that gonna impact this race at all?
It shouldn't. It, it doesn't touch those, any of those roads, so. It's coming down Valley Road, taking it right on Triple I, so. Could be fine. Plus it's Sunday.
Yeah. Everything will be buried, maybe one small.
Patty is asking, what about cleanup day?
If, again, it's gonna be individual culverts right now, so if, it won't affect anything.
If, that is, if they get started.
If they get started.
I'm still waiting for a text to let me know what the plan for tomorrow and Friday is. So it'll all come down to where the big save.
And we just wanna make sure, cause we're on logging now, I just wanna make sure that everyone. Just when you see the excavators out there, you know, please try to stay away from the construction areas as much as possible. Um, we, there may be some very limited times. When there is a detour that's required, but those will be marked, and we'll just use. Packard's Road and Village Road as our workarounds.
They're gonna warn people at the intersections, so don't drive up to.
And have to turn around.
And have to turn around.
Sure.
Yeah.
So with this delay caused by dig save, it has nothing to do with Piper, it's, this is no reflection on. On the project manager at Piper, it's just unavoidable delay due to problems with required dig save.
Yeah, the request was submitted.
Right.
It would've been done in April.
Here we are in May, yeah.
Here we are, w- w- once it's submitted, we're at their mercy, basically.
Right. Is this going to delay significantly the completion?
I don't anticipate that at this point.
Right.
I don't think Piper intended to get started till.
Anyway, okay.
They anyway, so, uh, I think we're, I think we're okay timeline, timeline.
Good. Anything else?
Power and water, wasn't that gonna be cut off for some period of time at the beginning?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate issue. Not power and just. No.
There was some notice I remember went out, that's a.
There was a water notice that one, that's what, that's what Dylan talked about earlier.
That's not really.
That's not related to the.
Uh, well, no, they're. Any intentional. Disrupting the power water as a result of the paving project.
But I just, I don't want people to get confused, two separate projects, right, so the Dana White. Putting in Green Peak, there will be two days where there will be water shut offs. To some properties in the center of town. We're still trying to determine exactly which ones. Um, the first of those will be next Tuesday. From nine A M. to five P M. And we will get notices out to those properties.
Any questions on that?
No, good, anything guys on the road project, okay, well, don't go anywhere, because we want to talk about the transfer station.
Well, there's nothing.
Anything?
No, no, we can say. Total review, so.
So it's still.
Nothing.
Still.
The bar's hands.
Yeah. Nothing until, uh, other than what we've already talked about.
Potentially having to move it, uh, down.
Yeah.
Down.
If it goes much further, this may be the site. You know, for the, for at least a year.
Yeah. Uh, well, just to remind the audience too, that we have an A O C. That we're operating under.
That's me.
And so. It's unlikely they're gonna. It's unlikely they're gonna give us an extension.
Right.
Uh, without having to actually move the operation down here as well. As we wait for the environmental review, which is already causing issues. Potential delays.
Yeah.
Significant, comma significant, okay. Uh, wastewater project update, anything further, anyone?
Nothing right now.
Anything further, just, okay, it is what it is. Okay. Board concerns and directives.
I had one little thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the town core working group met this morning.
Oh, yeah.
Or this, uh, Tuesday, whenever, whatever day it is.
Yesterday.
Yesterday afternoon.
God, no. Um, and we're talking about, um, taking on the. Idea of figuring out the bathroom situation in the north end.
Mm-hmm.
And we have porta-potties with various stakeholders at this point, that's not really a nice solution. Um, and the thought was that if we could find a place to construct actual. Bathrooms and do like a public-private partnership amongst all those concerns. Um, that that would be a good way forward. Um, but I wasn't sure. What the conversations had been, say, with the library property. Um, if, I know there's been some talk in the past, but it just wasn't really up to date on that.
I don't think we've discussed, well, the property is owned by the town, the property that the library is located on. We haven't had any discussions, I think, with the.
Library trustees.
Library trustees about anything at this.
Are you still wing?
I am not.
However, that, that, the, the use of that land would be a select board decision.
Well, if you're gonna tie into the, the plumbing system on the, the, the li- the library's bathroom.
If we impact, if we impact on the library operations, then yes.
Well, the initial thought was just to be able to tie into the septic somewhere really convenient, and it just.
Well, this would be a separate service.
You know, oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but.
It wouldn't go through the library to the, to the bathroom building, whatever.
Right, 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 it would be separate off the main that runs down. Right, runs down Boulder Path.
Water and sewer.
Right, so we wouldn't have to necessar- I mean, that would be an option.
West Branch and.
So it's not, it's not septic.
No, sewer.
It's.
It's.
Town sewer, yeah, town sewer.
Yeah, the library has the best, right, so we don't necessarily have to impact the library or its operations, or do anything to the building at all. But we do have control over that parcel of land as the, as the select board.
What large amount parcel is it?
One point two five A.
It's pretty, it's pretty good size, yeah, yeah. Pretty good, so you can see it here, this is, this is it here.
Oh, thank you.
So it's pretty, it's a pretty good sized piece of land, so you can see we got a lot of road frontage. On both, um, above Boulder Path and on.
Yeah.
West, by West Branch, it's.
West Branch is not.
It's, it will be really, no, you don't want people turning it, and then you tucking it in between private property.
Right.
And the library.
I really wanna do, I recommend doing that.
So, uh, we've not had any discussions, I mean, even if we were to want to use this land without. Without touching the library at all, I think we'd wanna have discussions with the library trustees.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they were thinking of maybe putting.
Well, just starting the discussions, and I thought, you know, running it by this board would be an appropriate next step, we'll see. Um. Is that close enough to the tennis courts and to the? I would think so, like an actual physical building, I think would be pretty. Visible and an easy thing for hikers coming off the trails to see, or, or heading up people can't just see or.
It's a good question.
And we're discussing it at that meeting, though, there weren't any other. You know, locations closer have been offered, so I don't know.
Nothing that the town owns.
Yeah, nothing that the town owns that's closer.
Right.
Seems like pretty convenient. I mean, of course, could always look to reach out to either.
Right.
You know, revisit with the tennis center or B B T S to see if they wanna donate some land, but. I don't know.
I, I would, uh. I would share Patty's concern, just watching the, the parking. For tennis, they will, they will, people will park illegally on Snows Mountain Road rather than park in the B B T S parking lot and just walk. To the tennis courts, that, that's not an uncommon occurrence.
And people park directly in front of the library.
Yeah, they do that as well.
All the time.
That's right, that, that is a parking spot for the library, so. I've not heard the librarians complain about, but you can get, what, three or four cars in there?
Well, libraries only open from three to five, so usually by then the.
It's, it's not an issue, right.
But.
Well, yes, it is a problem. People using B B T S parking lot.
Yeah.
Just.
Or I'm willing to use the.
And I'm willing to use the big parking lot on the other side.
Well, I guess the basic question is, i- is. Is bathrooms at the north end a town responsibility or?
Well, it would.
Versus, I mean, hikers. I think probably. Come into, may, might come into the town purview, but.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you got a couple of private businesses there.
Well, as I were talking about, a public-private partnership in some way to have people work together. Um. To solve the issue, because it's not going away. I mean, nothing to be decided today.
I'm turning favor.
Wanted to.
Discussions, further discussions going forward, if you, if the town core working group wants to. Look for a solution.
actions.
Yeah.
And you know, with the understanding that budgets are tight all around, but, um, just to get the ball rolling in a better direction than porta-potties.
Yeah, I don't think anyone likes the porta-potty solution. Um, I play tennis a lot, and I just don't go to the bathroom until I get home.
Yeah.
Um, but I know there are tennis groups that are there all day and.
Yeah, that's when you usually get.
But I think it's part of the tennis center's business.
Yeah.
So at what point is the town responsible for other businesses, I mean, your rent went out for. Town square maintenance, or I forget what you call it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure part of that covers the bathroom, so it's not fair to your business that you have to pay to have a bathroom in town square. And these other businesses don't, that's, you know.
Well, no, but they, but they would, that's the public-private partnership, but I'm talking about the businesses involved, have, at least. Tom is part of the town for work, town core working group has said he would be willing to invest. Um, so it's just a matter of, you know, Ian was there.
It seems, it seems to me that the town could. I'm just talking off the top of my head, but the, the town has the land. The town could connect to this.
That would be our.
Right.
Could be our contribution.
The use of the land.
Let, let the private businesses contribute the money to.
Build something and run it. Well, to run it, the operations and maintenance, yes.
So I mean, I think.
Or have some sort of an agreement going forward with.
Right.
Contract, who's responsible.
But I mean, this is something that the town core group could look at, right?
Right, yes, we just started the discussion, yes, yes.
I doubt that B B T S would have an interest since they already have a bathroom, but.
Right, but the resort for this.
The resort and.
There in the summer.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm assuming a seasonal type of thing, but again, we're just starting discussions.
Yep.
That's fine. Good.
Continue, the library parcel could be a, a place.
It's town owned, yeah. On, on this area, by the way, I had a, a, a discussion not that long ago with Craig, and he says he has reached agreement with Tom. On the parking area, it's along Snows Mountain Road, if I'm remembering correctly, and that he was planning to fix it up. In some way to make it more presentable, and I asked, uh, him to, to get with the town about signage. Uh, for that area, he said, he, he didn't think we'd need much by way of signs, cause the way he plans to. Fix it up, it would be self-evident where you could park.
Okay.
So, I don't know if he's approached.
He hasn't.
Any, anyway, it's, obviously, obviously very busy, just getting his golf course up and running for. For, it's gotta be opening soon, I guess, yeah?
I would think probably another week.
Another week?
I think.
Yeah. But that would be a very nice, uh, that would be a very nice, uh, thing to have, is that more structured parking there, I think.